We'll call the City Council Regular Meeting to Order for Monday, June 2nd, 2025. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cordes.
Here.
Mayor Hoyt.
Here.
Councilmember Matts.
Here.
Councilmember Lean.
Here.
All right, unless there are any changes to the agenda, I would seek a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Holly. Second by Jake. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, first item on our agenda is 5-1, which is the Oath of Office for Nathaniel Seem as our Police Chief. At this time, we'll go ahead and administer the Oath of Office.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name, do solemnly swear.
Aye, Nathaniel Seem, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend, the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Minnesota.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Minnesota.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties as Police Chief.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties as Police Chief.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mayor, Council, thank you. I am a cop at heart. As you see, I'm a husband, I'm a father, a son, an uncle, a brother, and those people are here supporting me today. Today, I also become a leader, and what I think to be the best kind of leader, is a leader of the heroes that are standing in the back of this room. If I could do anything today, it's just to acknowledge how fortunate I am to work with such exceptional people, and how thankful I am that you guys have given me that opportunity. Thank you.
Nick, say anything?
I don't think I have anything to say. But I mean, there's so many things I want to say, so many things I could say, I guess, but I just couldn't be happy that you're here. Forgive one small-town joke, but I can only assume it's that Elgin upbringing that does you proud, right? Inside joke, but I'll just leave it there.
You know, we're lucky. You're tenured, you have the respect of our department, you have the respect of other departments, we see that here, and you love our community, you know its heart. How did we get so lucky? We just got so lucky. So I'm glad you're here.
Chief, congratulations. This is a well-deserved honor. I look forward to working with you over the next years to come, and I look forward to seeing the way that you can transform the department during your tenure, and continue to make Farmington a safe place to live. I think it's one of the really cool things is, we got to see you grow as a police officer in this community, and I think it'll give some of the younger folks something to look to aspire to. So, congratulations.
Chief Seem, congratulations, and we are so fortunate to have your leadership here. Nineteen years, you worked your way up from patrol, all the way now to chief, and we're very fortunate you know this community, you care, you know the officers, and you care. You care about everybody. Thank you for stepping up and being the leader that you are. I appreciate that. And also, I have a note here from Councilmember Wilson that was not able to make it. And so he says, "Congratulations, Chief Seem. You have earned the respect and trust of your colleagues within the Farmington Police Department, and I am confident you will be a great leader for the department and our city." And he's en route with a family obligation, and although he cannot make it to your swearing-in ceremony, he looks forward to congratulating you in person at our next council meeting.
Not a whole lot to add beyond what's already been said. You obviously have the trust of your team. You have the trust of Chief Rutherford, you have the trust of the City Council, you have the trust of our community. You are a servant leader through and through. I have no doubt that your tenure as chief, however long you choose for it to be, that you will serve at the highest levels, and you will continue to increase the standard by which you expect out of not only our department, but also for the departments that are watching. As Jake mentioned, coming up through the ranks not only gives hope to your fellow brothers and sisters who you now are tasked with leading, but also provides for aspirational goals for those wanting to pursue similar forms of leadership within the law enforcement community. It speaks volumes as to the number of people that are here, but also from adjacent and adjoining communities and their respective departments. My only piece of advice, make it yours. Be the leader that Nathaniel Seem wants to be, and pace yourself. Pace yourself. But I know that you will lead proudly, you will do all the things as you have throughout your career, and we couldn't be prouder to call you Chief Seem. So congratulations. It'll be a short meeting, so you all can stay if you'd like. Our next item on the agenda is item 5-2, which is the Dakota County Farmington Library. Our branch manager, Barb Saboda, will provide an update regarding the Farmington Library. Barb, welcome.
Hello. No, thank you for having me. So, Mayor Hoyt, appreciate it. Councilmembers, it's always good to come and let you know what's going on at the library these days. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Barb Saboda, and the branch manager, right across the street at the library. Come see what we're up to. So, we're just gonna hop right into the numbers at a glance, because I'd like to get the numbers out of the way at the top of the talk all the time. So, 90,407 visitors to the Farmington Library in 2024. Now, I know this is already June, so at the end of April of 2025, we've had so far 29,000 visitors come to the library. So, we're keeping pace with last year easily enough. And also in Farmington, those 259,000 items checked out in 2024, that's just through the Farmington branch. The 76,487 people who have attended programs, that is across the whole, I know the last year I said I was gonna break it down and give you just Farmington numbers, but I never got around to it, so sorry about that, but maybe next year I'll get to it. So, anyway, moving along, trying to make this quick for you. So, the two pictures on the far left of your slide I'm gonna talk about first. So, in 2024, our Youth Services Coordinators wrote a really successful Library Services and Technology Act grant, an LSTA grant, to enhance our children's play areas. So, now all 10 branches have some of these new PlayStations that are intentionally designed with culturally-inclusive toys. They are bundled into kits, and they rotate monthly between all the branches. So, depending on what month you're here, you'll see a different setup with this little kind of wood unit here. But the new play spaces, they encourage a sense of belonging for all children, they affirm the many cultures that are found in our communities, and we absolutely invite you to visit each month to imagine new stories with your children. We have a construction site, we have a Tuck-Tuck Rickshaw taxi, we have a tea service down on the bottom there, you'll see a campsite, and there's a tent tucked in the back corner behind there. So there's lots and lots of ideas to kind of get the kids' imaginations flowing. It's just a lot of new ways for the kids to explore across cultures, to create their own meaningful learning experiences, to give them some of their own self-confidence as well as they, really, they're learning language skills as they teach themselves or talk through their little stories that they do when they're play-acting with these units. So, that's all the kinds of goals that we're trying to achieve with them. So the gentleman in the center picture there, that is Tomas Araya, he is our current artist, well, he'll be our current artist in reticence this fall. He is a multimedia artist originally from the Andes Mountains. His work centers around storytelling, cultural healing, indigenous practices, and environmental awareness. And Tomas will be teaching art classes throughout Dakota County in the fall, some of which will be presented in Spanish for the folks in our community who are Spanish speakers. He will be here in Farmington twice to teach a couple of watercolor courses, and we're really looking forward to working with him. He's a real joyful teacher. He was in Farmington once before already, and he has a lot of fun in his classes. And then, I've always talked about the outreach van. So, this summer, just so that you know, we will be marching with the Grand Parade at Top the Tater Days. We will be with the van on July 11th for the Meesville Mud Hens baseball game, and on August 8th for the Water Play Day at Whitetail Woods. So, moving along, we have our strategic plan. So, we recently went through and redid our strategic plan, and you all know, everybody does these periodically. So, these goals and strategies are gonna help shape our yearly work plans across the whole library system for the next three years. They help us remain focused on creating stronger and more accessible services, and they are always based on our community's survey responses. So, last year when we did the community survey throughout Dakota County, we received 11,563 survey responses, which I'm sure you know is a whopping big number for survey responses. We were astounded, we were really thankful and grateful, and very happy to see that. So, pretty simple goals here. Goal one is to create a sense of belonging and joyful experiences at the library, which I think we do at Farmington every day. But the number-one takeaway from the survey responses is that the library is a much-loved and much-used resource, and patrons say that they have a great experience when they use the library, and that they value the services that our staff provides. Goal two is to deliver accessible collections, which makes sense. So, that also is going to be reflected in the community changes, demographic changes, the reading interests of our patrons. So, an example and point for this would be the graphic, the children's graphic novels are really, really popular right now, and so we are making sure that we have more of those in our collection for the kiddos to check out than what we may have done in previous years. So, we try to respond to what it is our patrons are asking for as best we can. Goal three is to increase awareness about the library's offerings. So, many customers asked for items and services that the library actually already offers. So, we clearly need to continue to update our marketing strategies, because it seems like no matter how much we tell folks about the services we offer, some folks still don't realize that all the things we do are available to them. So, anyway, I'm sure we'll be talking about strategic plan again in another three years or so. In the meantime, self-service hours, you know, I'm just so grateful and thankful, we have had 29,687 visits to the Farmington Library since starting self-service hours in 2023. This community has really embraced this entire concept, they have made the library their own, they take responsibility for it, they appreciate it, they look out for each other. We've had absolutely no trouble with it at all, we've had nothing but really great comments about it. So, I'm really, really happy to know this. You know, it's just, I know that you all love our staff and love us, because you tell us that all the time. But I'm just really, really happy to know that Farmington residents can use their library on their schedule. That is so important to me. So, I'm really glad that this is working out well. And what I can also say is that in 2024, we calculated that 15% of our total branch visits actually occurred during self-service hours, and this year so far, we are up to 17%. So, the service is increasing in its popularity, and that's good to know, too. So, with all the hard work that we've done with this program, the library and the Public Services and Revenue Department actually was awarded the 2025 Heroes Award by the county commissioners this year in February. So, that's me standing up there with my director, Margaret Stone, and Councilman Slavik, and a whole bunch of other council members, and all the other library staff members who made this program possible, because it was definitely a lot of nuts and bolts in the background to make it all work. So, okay, now for a little bit of fun. So, this is clearly a picture of me with Minnesota author Alan Eskins. This was back in February, on the 18th of February, Alan launched his Quiet Librarian book, and we had a book launch event at the library that evening. We had 130 adults try to squeeze themselves into the meeting room so that they could hear him talk and ask him questions and buy one of his books, and he did a book signing and all of that. It was absolutely a wonderful evening. The book itself, the story of the book starts out actually inside the library. So, it's, Farmington is, Farmington is getting out there. And so, anybody who reads this book knows about Farmington from the first chapter or so. It's a really fast-paced story, quick, fast-moving plot, page-turner sort of thing. So, if you like that kind of book, feel free to come pick it up at the library or buy it, and give it a chance. And no, I am not the Quiet Librarian. Never, never, not me. But anyway, then also I mentioned John Sanford there. John Sanford is another Minnesota author, and his latest thriller is Lethal Prey. Lethal Prey actually has some pages set in Farmington as well, because characters are following clues through the Twin Cities area, and it brings them down to Farmington, and they stop, and they have some lunch at the Dairy Queen, and then there's a mention of, you know, they had to meet with somebody over on Walnut Street. And then, anyway, so there's like three or four pages talking about Farmington in the middle of this thriller. So, we are known in the community. So, if you'd like to, you know, read about your own town, it's kind of interesting. It's fun stuff. Anyway, I thought you would appreciate it. Okay, summer highlights. Summer Discovery, the big thing for Summer Discovery this year is that it's actually all summer long, not just a five-week or a six-week program. It started yesterday, June 1st, wait, no, Sunday, wait. What's today? Today's the 2nd. That's right. Anyway, June 1st through August 31st, all summer long. The reading logs, I gave them to you up there, there's more at the back under the podium if people want to take them home. They will also be available during self-service hours to pick up as well. Most of the Farmington children's programs will be outside, off-site. So, if you are looking for our programs, you want to, when you're in our event calendar online, you will want to click on Farmington and also off-site, or you won't see our programs. So, you want to do that. That's why we have that printed page that has three months' worth of programming on it on both sides. So, keep that in mind. And we are currently accepting more volunteers to help out with those big programs that Ms. Amy does. So, things like setting up and tearing down and helping the kids with crafts and that kind of thing. If you are 13 or older, you are welcome to participate as a volunteer. You will need parental permission for that, and if you talk to Andrew Cook, he can get the kids set up for that. So, for all the teens who might be listening in, there's something for you to do, too. Okay, so, Top the Tater Days, the Bazillions, June 28th, 10 a.m., sponsored by the Public Library, and they are awesome fun for kids. Looking forward to that. And so, thank you so much for having Ms. Amy be a contestant. We are so looking forward to her kissing that pig. I cannot tell you, it's gonna be great. So, anyway, thanks for that, and please vote for Ms. Amy, and that's a shameless plug, I know. Okay. Last but not least, our geocaching game has a few updates, too. That starts next week, June 9th through August 22nd. We're doing it a little bit differently this year, and where did that go? I had them, I had one. Anyway, okay, so I don't have it, just hold up and show you. I don't know where it went. But anyway, instead of doing caches like this in every park, we're doing just a laminated QR code. So, you need to scan the QR code into your phone. It will give you a clue that will help you figure out the coordinates in order to get to the very final cache, which will be one of these boxes. So, there are three prize levels, level one after nine fines, level two after 18 fines, and a grand prize after 27 fines. This is a partnership with all of you fine folks at the Farmington. So, thank you to Emily Shearer and all of those college interns that come and help out in the summertime, because they help maintain the caches at the parks to make sure that if they get lost or torn up by a tractor or whatever, they can get replaced. But anyway, so, these are the folks I'd like to thank. So, again, Emily Shearer, Autumn Level from the Dakota County Parks, for helping us with the Water Play Day, and then Anna Lubinski from 360 Communities and Sarah Malz. They help us out with musical mornings and books and beyond in the summertime. And 360 Communities, of course, always does a lot of community support services for us. So, that's what I have for you. This is our final picture of us on St. Patrick's Day, that's why most of us are in green, and we're sporting that heavy-duty trophy. So, any questions? I'll be happy to stand for them. Oh, and of course, now I find, here's that little geo, this is what they'll look like. So, if you find one of these in the parks, please don't throw it away. Just snap a picture of it. Anyway, so, questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Jake?
Thank you, Barb, for your presentation. I did have one question. The self-service hours, could you explain how that works just a little bit?
Sure.
I'm unfamiliar with the program, so shame on me, but I'd like to learn more.
No worries. So, what you do is you have to go on our website, there's a page that explains how you sign up. There's a little video that we ask you to watch to kind of train yourself in a little bit. Then you fill out a form that goes to Egan. Egan creates another card for you that is basically a radio frequency card. It does have your library barcode on it, and it takes anywhere between a week and two weeks, depending on how busy they are at Egan. They'll send the card back to us, we'll send you an email saying, hey, it's here. And then you can come and pick it up, and you have access to the library from 6 a.m. to 11 p.m., 365 days a year, whether it's a holiday or not. So, it can be Memorial Day, it can be Christmas, it can be Labor Day, if you need to hop in and pick up something real quick because the kids got the croup, and it's 2:00 in the morning, and you want to watch a movie. Okay, not 2:00 in the morning, 10:30 at night. We'll try 10:30 at night. 10:30 at night, that sort of thing, yeah. But that's the essence of it, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Otherwise, thank you for the book recommendations with a couple of scenes set in Farmington. That's kind of cool.
Yeah.
Holly?
You know, I just think that the library is one of the greatest assets we have in this community, truly. When we moved here, coming up on 14 years ago now, my kids were three and six, and so they grew up in the Farmington Library. And then, you know, my husband now is largely responsible for collecting and dropping off the things that he and I take. But I realized what a big leap it was to do the self-service hours when you did that. It was that scary, but is it gonna work sort of thing? And I will tell you, as a parent of then-18-year-old senior, it was a brilliant move for not only adults, but also like young adults that are in that capacity, that are looking for quiet spaces to be able to study when you're closing, you know, much earlier than maybe what their out-of-activities and stuff like that. So, I love hearing and seeing that it's been successful, and that people are being respectful of the space at the same time they're accessing it, because that's usually the downside is, people want to get there, but can we actually afford to keep it open if anything's happening? So, great to hear that that hasn't been the case for you. I love the summer programming. I love the relationships that you continue to build in and around the community and through the county. So, thanks for the update. It's awesome.
Thank you.
Nick?
I think I said the same thing last year, but since my kids constitute about 2,000 of those checked-out items, I think every year, I really appreciate the no-late fees change, because they're the type that will wait three or four months to remind me that they have had a book underneath their mattress for that entire time that I'll find later. So, like I said, I couldn't say more positive things about the library than I already do. So, I'm sure you'll see us there a lot this summer.
I'm sure we will.
As always, thank you for everything that you and your team do. It's just, it's, like, for those of us that grew up around the library, like, you know, going back to the days when it was in the Ramona River Center, we know the importance of it, and the programming and the extension of community education and county services. And it's another outlet for our kiddos, right? And I don't say kiddos as just, you know, our K through fives. It's good, active opportunities for those all the way up through graduates and even adults. The transition to the self-service hours, tremendous reception. I remember back when Commissioner Slavik even was mentioning it, that it was gonna be a pilot, and we weren't quite sure if it was gonna be well-received or not. And the success of it has become a model, moving into other libraries across the county. But again, thank you. Your team's amazing, you continue to show up at all the events, you do all the things, you absolutely are a staple in the community, and we appreciate the update every year when you bring it to us. So, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Appreciate it.
All right, our next item on the agenda is our citizen comments. It's a time reserved for citizen comments. Anyone wishing to speak, come up and do so at this time. Our citizen comments are a time for anyone to address the city council on matters not on the agenda. Those speaking should state their name and address and limit their comments to five minutes. We will not engage in discussion on your topic, but those requiring a response will be responded to by the next city council meeting. but those requiring a response will be responded to by the next city council meeting. You're good to go.
My name is Jeff Schotler. I live at 22420 Calico Court, Farmington. Last time I was up here, I said I'd try to come every time you guys had a meeting and talk. I didn't come the last two times because a developer reached out to me with, with their lawyers to talk to my lawyers. Cost me a month of time in trying to figure out what I did wrong. If I did wrong, where can I go from there? We spent my 47th birthday talking about it and spending about five grand to defend things that I did that weren't wrong. I talked. I wanted to go out to Cannon Falls. People asked me to go out to their open house residence to talk to them. That was what got this developer so upset with me. I'm impeding business. I'm impairing business, and that would be a torturous act for me to go talk to a resident in Cannon Falls. So this is my new potential good neighbor. I don't want to say a lot about him. I don't know a lot about him. I can't clean. You know, you've said, we don't know what the water is. It's true, because we don't know an end user. It's not going to use 2.5 million gallons a day. We don't know what it's going to use. Might not use any. You know, maybe they'll be closed loop cooling and provide their own water. Uncomfortable, I get being uncomfortable. I'm willing to be somewhat of a goat for the town or whatever you want to say, the pawn of the town. You know, we have to impact some people to make things better. I don't like 250 feet's acceptable. I know you guys care. I've seen the last few meetings, the retirements, everything. I know you guys have emotion and compassion for people, just people in general. Have some for us, too. Some way, somehow. Figure it out. I know you said trust the process. It's hard. It's a year later, Josh. There's got to be some way to give the residents some kind of a sign that you're also going to work for the ones that are getting impacted there. There's other ways to do things. I've suggested things. I know you don't want my suggestions. I'm not an engineer. I'm not a billion-dollar designer. There's ways to thing, make things better. Some way, somehow, let us know that you're going to do something to make it a little better. It's been a year. It's been over a year. My daughter's asking. She's turned 13 on Friday. She's asking me, where do you go every Monday, every other Monday? Why aren't you coming home? Why are you doing this? Why are you doing that? It's for her. It's the same thing you guys would do. Every one of you would be up here asking for more space. I feel that that's honest. You don't have to answer me or not, but I think if you answer that to yourselves, every person in this room would want more than 250 feet away from their homes. Ask yourself that question. Would you be okay with it? Go drive-by meta. I mean, maybe the fans are going to be quiet when they come in, but that five years of construction ain't going to be. And at 250 feet, that's pretty insane. Drive by there at night. Please, drive by meta at night. And picture your home and your family 250 feet away. It's crazy close. I remember our talk when you came out and met with us in the neighborhood. You're like, do you think we're going to put a building right on top of you? It really feels like it's right on top of us for what's being proposed. Asking for a little compassion for the ones that are over there. I've said from day one, it can work. It can fit. I have to be on that lawsuit. I have to continue to stop it if nothing is sent to show us that you're going to try to make it better, that you're going to work with residents a little bit. Not asking for 1,000 feet. I've said the same number 100 times over. It's in every email. I think it's in texts to a few of you. I'm not asking for everything. I'm not asking for so much that it runs them out. I'm asking for a safe place to live. I'm asking not to move. We've done the math. Interest rates, realtor fees, it's 100 grand. Why do I need to spend that to move so that we can accommodate a business? Make it safe. That's all I'm trying to say. Let us know somehow you're going to do something for us people, and make it safe. I don't know. Reach out, one of you, reach out. Let us know that that is in your plan, that this ain't the final plan, because we don't know that. We haven't seen that. Some way, somehow, I get you're advised not to talk to us. I'm advised not to talk to you. I'm advised not to be here tonight after April 29th, what they gave me. So I beg you, reach out, drive-by meta. Put yourself in my position, and if I'm that crazy, reach out to me privately. Let me know that, too. But I feel like you'd all do the same thing. Little girl looking at you. It's the only reason I'm here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon or good evening, council. Nate Ryan, Cambrian Way. Your meeting minutes say that I live in Castle Rock. I don't live in Castle Rock. I live in Farmington. I'm a Farmington resident, so I hope that you can adjust those meeting minutes moving forward. A few things. So your State of the City address, Mr. Mayor, you had talked about, a little frog in my throat tonight, but you had talked about, you know, just kind of the tax dollars, the tax implications. So you had said, you know, $65 million in projects. I'd like for you, I mean, if you can, and if you're willing to, is really, what are those projects? I don't expect an answer tonight, but, you know, multiple times you say, well, we're going to get back to you. We're here to comment. Get back to us. What exactly are those $65 million worth of projects? You know, where, how much are you going to spend, and where are you going to spend that money at? And what is going to come out of the other data center that is coming into town? North of 50, we're going to get a data center. No one is talking about that. That's happening. That project is going to happen. You're going to get tax revenue from that, from that area. Why is it solely focused just on the tax revenue that's coming from this project over here? What about what you're getting? You're not even mentioning any of that. You didn't mention that. You didn't mention that in your State of the City address whatsoever. You are getting a data center. You are getting and growing tax revenue. That is going to happen. There's no question. What is in question is this potential project over here by the golf course. So what are those projects? How do you forecast that? Where do you see those coming from, and what direct benefit do they have to the residents of Farmington? Or are they more benefits to more businesses? I really think that creating an economic zone inside of Farmington will also help you with your zoning issues that you have. Currently, if you look at a zoning map, there's still places around us that are technically Castle Rock. Castle Rock Bank being one of them, the boat shop. There's plenty of little lots north of our neighborhood that are there. They're, they're all mixed up. So, but, and that senior center that was going over, that's the old Hy-Vee land, you know, that was mixed-use commercial industrial. You changed that over to residential. You had, and you started an economic zone that could provide a lot of tax revenue. Why not stick to that plan? Right now, what it seems like you're doing is you're just firing from the hip. Well, let's go get some over here. Let's go get some over here. Let's go get some over here. Why not really, truly have a plan, rather than having to go to the Met Council, having to get sued and go through all these things? That's an economic plan. The library can do it in three steps. Y'all can't do it for the city? Y'all can't think about that? I, I think it's just, it's frustrating that you, there is a way to do it, and there is a way to create an economic zone, an economic plan, but you're all just, just missing it. Well, there's got to be willing sellers. You put enough money in front of a seller, they're going to be willing. Everyone has their price. They are. And I know you're going to say, well, there's, you know, green acres or this, you know, farm, farm reserve. Look at those properties. Most of them are coming out of farm reserve in 2030 to 2040. Most of them will be. And you have ways that you can start to plan for those things. So it's, it's a possibility, and I really, I really just find it frustrating that you're not talking about those things. You're not talking about the other developments that you are getting and how those are going to impact the $65 million that you plan on spending. Or are those just pet projects that you think are cool? What does the rest of the council think they're cool? Does the planning commission think they're cool? You know, what specifically are they? The other thing that is, it was really frustrating about your, your State of the City is, you know, that you're just, you're just basically saying that people are just complaining to complain. We're not complaining to complain. So I, like Jeff said, and I'll echo this, I'll try to get 250 feet away from the center of that project in Rosemont. Just try it. Just try to get 250 feet away from the center of that project. You're going to have a county sheriff. You're going to have Farmington PD. You're going to have those guys all over you in about two minutes. You can't even get that close. But yeah, you're okay doing this and putting this project in. I'm going to finish up a little bit with, I've got two more things, so just bear with me. I know I'm probably getting close to my time, but frankly, I don't care. But I will say this is, what, and I keep asking this, what does constitute for industrial project? Please bring that back to the next council meeting. I've asked this multiple times, in a public setting, in a public forum. Defend what you said, right? Defend in what you're doing. What is the difference in the city's eyes between a commercial, between mixed-use commercial industrial and a full industrial? Is it megawatts? Is it water usage? Is it outdoor storage? What defines that? And frankly, what, what were you given as a definition that made you vote yes? Jake wasn't here, right? But my guess is Jake would have voted yes. He seems like that kind of guy. So like, what, like, what, why did you vote yes? What information were you given? This should not be squashed by the attorneys and some, you know, whole legal mumble jumbo. This should be pretty easy to say, based on these definitions is why we made and why we voted yes. We view mixed-use commercial industrial as 750 megawatts or less? Really? There's nowhere else in Farmington that isn't a fully industrial project that uses anywhere close to that amount of power. We use or deem X amount of water or X amount of, you know, sewer or water or any infrastructure project that needs us. We deem them, we deem that mixed-use commercial industrial. And now you're hiding behind an attorney, or you made, or may or may not hide behind an attorney. Send me an email individually. I don't care. Answer that question. It should be just laid out. We talked about a smell test, Josh. This should be so easy to say, what is an industrial project? What's not? It should be something that is just clear as day. There should be no gray, and frankly, you shouldn't be in a lawsuit over it. Should be just clear as day. Yes, this is commercial. No, this is not commercial. Yes, this is mixed-use commercial industrial. Yes, this is industrial. No, it's not industrial. It should be that easy for you to define. It should be that easy for you all to say. There should be clear definitions of exactly what that is. Right now, in your city code, you have a data center, and all it says is data center. There's no definition, megawatt, usage, any of those things. I'm going to follow up with this last thing, and I promise this is the last thing. If you want to cut me off, we can argue about it, but what I will say is you promised jobs in your State of the City address. I'm going to say this as politely as I can. I'm going to use Joe Sushray. Mayor, that is B as in B, S as in S. Okay? I like your smile, because you know exactly what I'm talking about. You must be a Sushray fan, right? That's fantastic. But it is. You promised jobs for five to 10 years in your State of the City. You're like, oh, it's going to be five, oh, maybe 10 years. That, that, why, why would I come and build a restaurant knowing? Or why would I come and build anything that I'm going to likely fail after all those construction workers leave? You're not, you're not backfilling those five, those 700 jobs, 800,000 jobs. You're not backfilling those. You're backfilling them with maybe 15, 20 people who work at this data center. So I'd go and I'd do an, I'd build a restaurant. I bust my butt. I was going to say something else, but I bust my butt for a lot of years. Five years, 10 years. And then construction's over, and all those people are gone. All that wonderfulness is gone, and no one's coming in. No more rooftops are coming in to support those businesses. So while I do respect you, Mr. Mayor, somewhat, and your State of the City address, that is complete B as in B, S as in S, in terms of job growth and opportunity and what you're creating for the community, five to 10 years, that's it. That's it. That's just, it, it's not sustainable. And it's not, I don't think it's a very good way to plan, because then you have to find some other zoning issue, or you have to find some other thing to go and bring in another business to create those 500 to 700 jobs. It's just, it just confuses me. And again, please give me the definition. At the time, what were you told an industrial project was versus what a mixed-use commercial industrial project was? It's got to be on paper somewhere. It's got to be somewhere, what you were, what you based your decision on. And if it's not, why wasn't it? Why weren't you all asking that? Why weren't you all protecting us and saying, what is a mixed-use commercial industrial? I don't understand. What is an industrial project? How much water do they use? How much electricity do they use? What is this going to cost of infrastructure? Those are the type of questions that I would expect anyone to be able to ask on a city council, any single person, whether it's an engineer, whether it's a CFO of a company, whether it's a hairstylist. I don't care. Those are the things that, when you go to Legum Minnesota Cities and you sit there and you go through those initial classes, you learn that stuff. You learn to ask those questions. And frankly, you learn to demand it from your staff. And I say demand. I do, because they work for you. You don't work for them. You work for us, but you don't work for them. And it's really, really important to make sure that you understand that. Last thing, he's not in here, but I just wanted to say congratulations to Chief Seem. He seems like a fantastic officer, fantastic chief, and I hope he does the city proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. I'd seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Holly, second by Jake. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. All right. Roundtable. Amy?
No report from me tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, nothing. All right, Nick?
I finally have one. So if over the weekend you guys heard a lot of whistles going at the high school and Dodge Middle School, that was the Farmington Youth Lacrosse Association. They have the, it's called the Viking Goat Tournament, and don't ask me to explain what that origin or name has anything to do with, but four-age brackets, you know, you through 14, you, boys and girls on both sides, so 10 total tournament brackets, and Farmington won five of them. So best turnout in years for the Farmington team, so congratulations to all of those teams.
Holly?
School gets out this week, which means lots of additional little humans all over the place again. And many of them are going to be gallivanting through trails and across parks and doing all of that crazy stuff. And so if you are out and about and you are in a vehicle or in other modes of transportation, just be mindful of the little ones and the bigger ones that are enjoying their summer so that we can stay incident-free through the summer and keep everybody safe. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Jake?
I'm going to keep it short and sweet tonight, but tomorrow is my wedding anniversary. So I know my wife is watching at home, so happy anniversary, Bridget.
Nothing tonight.
Shirley?
Nothing for me.
David?
Well, if Chief Seem were still here, I'd say congratulations to Nate. It's been good to work with him as deputy chief for the last three months. I'm looking forward to hopefully many years of working with him as chief. To the council, I do want to say thank you for putting your confidence in me to serve as your interim city administrator, following Lynn's departure on July 1st. Obviously, we've still got a lot of work to do, even without Lynn. But I know I've got a, got a great team here, and I know together that we're going to keep the needle moving here in Farmington. And I look forward to seeing what decisions you make on a permanent administrator.
John?
Thank you, mayor and council members. I also look forward to working with Chief Seem. I, I've, we were blessed to have Chief Rutherford here, and I think this is a continuation. They won't be the same, but I think we're getting another fantastic chief. Two items. We had our pre-construction neighborhood meeting for the 2025 street improvements about a week, week and a half ago. We had 23 residents. Fantastic questions at those pre-construction meetings. We have the contractor there, and their foreman, and the inspector there, so the residents can meet them before things start happening on site. The trees have been taken out, but they start construction in earnest. June 23rd is their expected start date with that. One other item, Union Pacific, I think has finalized their schedule for doing work at the crossings on Ash Street and Elm Street. They project that they'll be working on Ash Street starting this Thursday with some pavement removal, and those crossings will be closed during the weekend. So Ash Street this coming weekend, and then Elm Street the following weekend. This has been a bit of a moving target from a schedule standpoint, but as soon as I get, if I get new information, I'll be sure to pass that along, get it on the website.
Thanks, sir. Kelly?
Good evening, mayor and council. We've talked over the years. We live in a very, very generous and giving community. On the consent agenda this evening, you approved four donation resolutions, three of them alone to the Ramlin River Center, one from Happy Harry's, Farmington VFW, The Veteran Steak Fry, and Marlene Swantec. Thank you to all those people for their generous donations to our senior center. And then the TC Running Company out of Burnsville for their gift cards, the Tater Trot. Speaking of the Tater Trot, you, too, can get this T-shirt, designed by our own recreation supervisor, Emily Sheer. All you have to do is register for the trot. It is Saturday, June 28th, right here at City Hall. We will be taking race day registration. Since Barb did a shameless plug for Ms. Amy, I will do a shameless plug for our fire chief, Price. He is also a contestant in Kiss the Pig, and I have definitely heard he wants to kiss the pig. So I don't know, Barb. Might be one or the other, but we'll, we'll find it. We'll find out who kisses the pig at 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 28th, under the, the main stage. This Saturday, Helmet Heroes, a collaboration between the Police Department and Parks and Recreation. Recreation, 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at Farmington Lutheran Church parking lot. As of this afternoon, we have 54 kids registered. So 54 kids in our community will be fitted and receive new bike helmets. There is a shelf life on bike helmets, so we're happy to put helmets on their heads. If anybody wants to do a short ride with me, I'd be happy to have someone trail behind me. We'll do a very short ride after. Rambling River Center, we are having a meeting on Wednesday. We are hoping, fingers crossed, for a punch list on Friday. So we are getting very, very close to completion of that project, which we're definitely looking forward to. And I also want to congratulate Chief Seem. Looking forward to continuing to work with him. He's going to do awesome. So thank you.
Thank you.